Good evening, everyone. We'll call to order this March 12th, 2020, school committee meeting. At this time, we'll take public input. Citizens at this time may address the committee on items of school business not on the agenda. The committee will take such items under advisement without action at the meeting during which the item is presented. Do we have any public input?
Chris McQ Putts, Seven Curb Street. I'm here tonight, nothing that I'm gonna be mentioning has, nothing's on the agenda for tonight, but I just thought I would get some, seek some clarification on some things that have transpired. First of all, I just want to be clear on this school policy to make sure I'm interpreting it right. So this policy is BDG, school attorney. And the last two paragraphs mention, "A decision to seek legal advice or assistance on behalf of the school system will be made by the committee." Committee meaning quorum of the committee. "The superintendent may also take such action at the direction of the committee." "Many types of legal assistance are routine and do not require specific committee approval or prior notice. However, when the superintendent concludes that unusual types or amounts of professional legal advice may be required, he or she will advise the committee and seek either initial or continuing authorization for such service." So my key question here is, back in November 29th, 2018, one single school committee member started entering into negotiations with our school attorney without any record of committee approval, committee authorization to do so. There were seven instances, possibly eight, that happened over a period of time from November through January 7th that were never authorized by the committee. So my question is, how did that happen? Did the committee authorize one school committee member to go off on his own to start negotiating a superintendent contract? Did you have any knowledge that that person was doing it? Or was there authorization that happened somewhere outside of a public meeting? I mean, you know I'm here at every single meeting and if I can't make one, I look at the tape. So I think there's explanations that need to be provided to the community of Medfield about how that happened, that it seems like our school committee just looked the other way when one school committee member went off seemingly on his own to start negotiation on a contract. And I also want to go back in time because in 2016 and 2015, there were two other instances where the superintendent contract was negotiated against open meeting law. And the most egregious one was in 2015 where there was a secret vote on the 3% retroactive salary increase, which was pretty egregious. So I just think it's really important for the taxpayers of Medfield to understand what has transpired over time. And I think what's especially upsetting to me is that the year that I moved into Medfield, the year my family moved into Medfield, was 1992. And a longtime community member said to me, gee, you know, the year that you moved in, there was a big uproar in town because the school committee, actually, two members of the school committee were recalled that year for doing exactly what the school committee has done, dealing with superintendent contracts in executive session and including in a year when the teachers were working without a contract, which is what happened in 2015. So, you know, I think that the school committee represents the community of Medfield. You are elected to represent the community of Medfield. And we have a pattern of behavior here where you're not representing the community of Medfield. And it goes, everything goes from the elementary school day extension to this school building project. There has never been opportunities, there's never been sufficient opportunities for people to weigh in before significant changes are made. Many of these changes are being made behind closed doors by one person, and the school committee is allowing it. And it's not right. And if we want to go back to 1994, where two school committee members were recalled because of the exact same type of actions, that's something that is always an option for the voters of Medfield. But I think that there's an option here for, just Riley, why are you laughing?
I'm sorry.
Because this is serious.
I'm literally not laughing, I'm listening to you.
This is serious. You are elected officials, and the community puts their trust in you as a committee. And to have have a superintendent of schools that has had three contract renewals, under the radar, done fairly secretly and not made public in the proper format is wrong, especially at a time when our teachers have been hurting with their compensation. It was inexcusable what happened in 2015 when they were in extended contract negotiations. And it's not right. It's not right. You're betraying the trust of the people of Medfield, and it's not right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public input? Alrighty. At this point, we will look over the minutes.
I'll seek approval for the, approval for the school committee meeting minutes on February 13th, 2020, as well as February 27th, 2020.
Motion to approve, okay. Do we have a second? A second? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Alright, first passes. New business, education plan.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. As you know, you all received a copy of education plan for the Dale Street project. I don't have it in front of me because I left all my, that's okay, I left all my materials back at the office. That was, this has been a collaboration among teachers, administrators, Left Field and Arrow Street. We really worked hard on this to put this together. I don't know how many pages it is.
A lot.
Forty-four.
Forty-four? So it's forty-four pages, just so that we have that on the record, it's forty-four pages. And I know that we've all worked real hard on this, and it essentially is prescriptive in terms of what MSBA wants you to describe in your school. And we took the approach of looking at what we have now in the Dale Street School, and that can be looking at it through curriculum, through space, through HBAs, whatever it is, and then what we'd like to see in the new building, and how our programming and our instruction will change based on the new programming, so, based on the new building. So I think one of the great things about this is we started with a premise of we're gonna provide an education plan, and then Arrow Street will design the building by our education plan instead of the other way around, which I think is what MSBA has done really well in the last, you know, five to six years through their process. And we were really happy to have Left Field and Arrow Street working with us through this entire process. So this is draft form, and you know there are two ed plans, there's the 3-4-5, and then there's the 4-5. So the 4-5 is exactly the same as the 3-4-5, except anything that references the 3-4-5 or the need for 3-4-5 is removed out of the ed plan. So, I mean, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, or if you could point out anything that you think that we need to change out of the draft form and put it into the final form, that would be helpful as well. I know Andrea will take the minutes on that, so she'll be able to get any of the, any of the changes that you recommend or any of the feedback. I think it's a great document, and it really is gonna serve us well through in the building process. Lynn, I don't know if you want to add anything, and Lynn and Tim are here from Left Field. You know, one of the things that they have talked to us about a lot is that MSBA will look at this and they will make recommendations. So it's not like this is the last draft you're ever going to see. They're going to make recommendations, and then we, as a school building committee and a school and community, are gonna have to make those changes based on what they say. So Lynn, I don't know if you want to just, do you have anything else to add, or?
I will say that it's for both grade configurations that they cast ups with reviewing. It's not a decision yet, it's basically giving the information to MSBA on both grade configurations, and then they go through a three-week review period, and they come back usually with pretty extensive questions that we have to answer. But these two educational plans are part of the preliminary design program submission. The draft was compiled yesterday, I think it was, and it's about 1,300 pages of information. So we're in the review process of that right now. But this is a small piece of the overall submission. And I think the appendix itself is about 1,000 pages that supports all the documentation and the program itself.
Do we have any questions or comments?
The one comment, I had, I forget Jeff.
Right.
Just the page three, the enrollment plan, that's, those figures are from MSBA?
The projected enrollments.
Correct, the projected enrollments. It's one of the, yeah, my only comment was just putting that under the table.
Right, right.
Just to make sure we know where the sources.
Absolutely.
It was my assumption, huh?
I have a question about the STEAM room, which is what Makerspace used to be called.
Right, right.
And I think we had talked about it at the vision session, but do you envision those rooms being staffed by a special STEAM teacher? Or are they just rooms that can be used by the classes?
Well, I think we're hoping both. So I think one of the things that Left Field has talked to us about and Arrow Street as well is that lots of times, MSBA will support programming, especially if you already have someone in that position. So we have Julie now doing that at Dale Street, so that's a great bonus for us. But we'd like to explore having that as a room where teachers can go as well without having a dedicated person. So we need to work through that. MSBA might come back and say, we can't do that, can we have one based on a dedicated person? But we'll go through that. I mean, I think that's one of the things that is interesting about this. If we do get the enrollment that is projected, there'll have to be more staff hired. There's no question about it, because if we're gonna look at class sizes around the school committee policy and what parents expect around here, then we'd have to add additional classroom teachers in those positions, so. But yeah, that's, and you know, Makerspace, Lynn, if you want to add anything else on that.
I just wanted to say, I think that MSBA, they did something unusual this time around in regards to the enrollment study for Medfield. Once they did the 10-year enrollment, they realized such an upward trend, that they decided to, that they decided to be judicious about it, that they would go do a 20-year study just to make sure that, that they thought that the training was accurate and that the enrollment projections that they put forth for Medfield were adequate.
Very good. Anyone else?
I mean, in general, I think that it completely aligns with our strategic plan, that we're actually looking very much at not only just students' centered learning, but we're looking very much at how do we really use the space to continue to grow and improve how we deliver curriculum? And that should always be the idea of what we're thinking of pretty much any time that we come here, any time we think about a building, any time that we think about what we can do to educate the kids. It's not only how do we deliver it, but how do we deliver it better? And how do we use those things to our advantage? And I think that it follows what we're hoping to do and what we look to do every day very well. There's no surprises, and I think that that's actually a really important thing about an education plan is that we aren't all of a sudden deciding that we're going to do things that's so much bigger and better and better, and it's that we're really looking at what our mission has been, and we want to continue with it and improve it.
Yeah, I think, thank you, Jess, I think some of the pushback is going to be on a couple of things that we included in the space summary that, you know, are a little off what MSBA is expecting. Like, we put in the ed plan and also in the space summary, the staff daycare. You know, that's something that we feel is important for our teachers, and it's been a huge success at the high school right now, but we'd like to expand that over to the elementary school, and this would be a great opportunity to do that. Incorporating MAP is something that we've talked about as well, that's an important piece of that. But also looking at expanding the spaces around our music program and also the gymnasium. So those are two areas that we felt through the visioning was gonna be really important to include in there. And it may end up costing more than what MSBA is gonna provide for us in terms of reimbursement. So we went for the 9,000 square foot gym and not a 6,000 and a 3,000 or something lower than that, which is, you know, something that we think is important for our community, not just our, after school, not just during the school day for our kids. And then looking at having a band room that is 2,000 square feet that will allow us to have an entire either band orchestra practice in there, so our kids aren't in the hallways or in the cafeteria or whatever. And then looking at the cafeteria, adding that additional, I think it's 150 square feet or 200 square feet to that stage, knowing that we have great participation right now in our music program to be able to fit all the kids up there. So those kinds of things that kind of go off the specs of what MSBA is expecting us to do may end up costing more for the town, but we feel like educationally and programmatically, that's what we need to have in our schools. So we'll see how that plays out and certainly get some feedback from them.
To a certain extent, to be a little crass. It also, many of those spaces that you just mentioned are also revenue-producing.
Absolutely.
Right? We have an enormous amount of revenue that is, that comes off of our gym, you know, that we could rent three more gyms at night if we had them. And that the daycare itself would not be something that's, you know, provided free, that our teachers continue to pay for that, and that we lose a private vendor.
Right.
At this point. So again, that is space that is paid for. And that it also allows us to continue to be flexible, you know? That that is space that may not always be used for those things, though it's expected it will be for a very long time. But we're able to be flexible with those spaces, and I think that's important, too.
Thank you.
I think one of the things that, sorry, Jess.
No, go for it.
I think one of the things that I always carried from the experience when we met with MSBA those two times to go through this process was the focus that they had on the longevity of the building. Plan this building to be there for 50 years, being used as a school, and that the spaces can be made flexibly for that, right? And so that was one of the things that I think was really good focus to have. And as we're thinking through this process, even from this point forward, that's reflected in here, is that we have planned to be, have those spaces be flexible and serve the community moving forward. So, and one of the key factors about when we're evaluating the space and the size of the building is to remember that, that it's going to be a school and that will hold kids in this town for 50 years, so, minimum.
Right.
Two things that stand out to me is how thoughtful this process has been. You know, we started the, what is it, the strategic plan in 2017, I believe, and we were already foreseeing this coming. So I just think it was thoughtful, and it was embedded in here, the results, what the town felt about keeping the grades together versus neighborhood schools. But also, and I didn't, now, if we decide to go or if we do do a 3-4-5, I noticed the, one of the benefits could be an expansion of music opportunities for grade three students. And I thought, oh, that would be really awesome, you know, to start younger. So anyways, I thought that was another added bonus in this plan that I had not thought of or heard of. So anyways. Alrighty, so I think we need to vote on this draft.
So 3-4-5 and a 4-5?
Correct.
Do we have a motion to approve the draft for a 4-5 and a 3-4-5 education plan?
So moved.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Hi.
Wonderful. Motion passes, thank you. Alrighty. An additional school committee meeting on the 26th?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So one of the things that we're looking at in terms of budget is getting some feedback from the community and from our teachers on spending the additional SOA money, albeit 71 or whatever thousand it is. It's still a requirement. The Commissioner has talked to us about the fact that so many of us, as he said, I forget the number, it's like 35 communities are getting 85% of the money, or whatever it is, which we've talked about numerous times here. He's doing a Level 1 and a Level 2 report that's due on April 1st. And quite frankly, we just haven't had the time to do some of that. And I'd ask that you add an additional school committee meeting to do some of that, to approve that plan once it's completed. But also, we're getting to budget soon, we'll have additional concerns around budget, I'm sure, that we'll need to talk about at that point anyway, so.
We should note on that, right?
Yeah, so if you could vote to have another meeting on the 26th, that would be appreciated.
Do we have a motion to add an additional meeting on the 26th of March?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Wonderful, 26th it is. 7:30 here?
7:30 here, yes.
Okay. Great. Alrighty. Other items since posting?
So just an update on, you know, how we're addressing the coronavirus and what we're doing. So shortly before our meeting, we sent out an email to all parents, letting them know that we are canceling school tomorrow. And that really came out of the meeting that Anna May and I had with the Board of Health today, just talking about what the data is out there and what the science is behind some of this, and the reasoning behind not having as many people in one space as possible. And what you can do to mitigate that would be real helpful for the spread of the virus. So we made that decision probably at 5 o'clock this afternoon. We're originally going to do a release date tomorrow to give our teachers some time to do some planning in case there's a longer-term shutdown. We want to be able to still provide our students some educational instruction and/or just work for them to do to keep up with what they need to do, so there's no regression. We want to make sure that if it's, it could be review, it could be enrichment, but it wouldn't be new instruction, and we're gonna try to prevent regression with our students. So that's where we are there. We have been doing a lot of extra cleaning starting last week, and we had crews in all weekend to do that. We were fortunate enough to have the electrostatic misters that we bought a couple of years ago that have been really helpful in this whole process. I know Michael is, can't wait for show and tell, so if you would allow him to do that. He wants to show you what that looks like and how it works. So we were able to buy these a few years, a couple of years ago when we had some issues in our locker room. And actually, the gentleman, I believe, that owns the company is in Medfield. So he reached out to us and talked to us about it, and we were able to get them. So it worked out great for the last couple of weeks. You're pointing that right at me? Seriously?
So they've been doing this every night in every school. Custodians, we put extra staff, like superintendent, just to make sure that all the schools, or so when the kids come in, everything's been.
Michael, would you mind going to the microphone just so that cable gets it?
So the superintendent, actually, just said, we purchased these two years ago for the district. And we originally purchased them to do the locker rooms at the high school and middle school. And then, but we've been using them throughout the district just to disinfect. This past couple of weeks, we've been using them throughout the buildings. We've been doing them at night, so when staff leaves, we have a crew that comes in and does the disinfected. And then we have a crew that comes in and does the cleaning. We also have done, we put an extra crew on day shift just to do, you know, all the major areas like doorknobs and bathrooms and sinks, just to make sure that there was a crew going. I don't know if you saw people cleaning doorknobs today, so we had that going around all day. Just because we want to make sure the staff and students are, you know, are safe. So, that being said, I, there's a little bucket there that, there's tablets in there. We usually, you only need one tablet per whatever ounce this is. And the way the spray works is once it hits the surface, it pretty much, 99.9% that it kills off whatever germs are out there. So the custodian staff, I'm just gonna demonstrate on the board here, they'll come in and spray the whole area. So they'll come into a classroom and they'll just spray, right? Once that hits the surface, it kills whatever is on there. These have been used all over by, so I spoke to the owner today, I believe, and they're at least three months behind schedule to pursue their new program. He said that he sold 10,000 of these to China when they were going through their issues. We're lucky to really have them in, you know, and we have, we have a school pass one of these at this time. So we're very lucky and fortunate. But there's a lot of school districts that don't have and can't get the handout. So I just wanted to show you the product we're using here in Medfield, plus the regular cleaning that we do.
Please, it doesn't need to be wiped down.
It doesn't, so what, so it.
Okay, okay, alright.
Show and tell's over.
Very good, alright.
So we're continuing to do that, so tomorrow, we're gonna have our staff in from 8 to 12. Our staff will be in from 8 to 12 tomorrow, and they're gonna be working on planning for a major, you know, shutdown for multiple days. We have a meeting with the Commissioner, Conference College Commissioner, excuse me, and the Governor tomorrow morning, 8:30, and I would not be shocked if we're required to shut down for two weeks. So that's what we're waiting to hear tomorrow. If that does not happen tomorrow, we'll be communicating with the Board of Health again tomorrow and looking at additional steps we need to take as a community and as a school district. So I tried to prep people with that email today to let them know that's the reason why we're having the day off, because this could be coming, and I would be almost certain that there'll be some sort of shutdown with our district at some point, whether it's next week or the week after or both. So from the medical folks, what they're telling us, that's really the only way to contain it. And I heard a great comment today is, if nothing happens in three weeks, then we did the right thing. You know, that was, that's the whole intent of this, so. I'll keep you in the loop as I always do, and certainly, once we start getting down that decision tree with Board of Health and everyone, we'll keep you in the loop on that, but.
Is there any, has there been any thought about whether containing sooner? Shutting things down sooner rather than the week after would be, are we simply looking at kind of what the, looks like the peak is happening? Or is it really that if we were to do this sooner, we could actually level that out even further?
That's the thought.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the thought. So we've had communities this evening that have canceled starting tomorrow or starting on Monday for multiple weeks. I know of a couple that having a half-day tomorrow or no school tomorrow, but they will be, or they're planning on canceling for two weeks after that. So it's just, you know, we've never been down this road before, so it's really something.
What does the, like, high-level training look like tomorrow? What are you trying to communicate to the?
No, the teachers are doing their planning to work with students if we are out for several weeks. So elementary folks are getting their work together, secondary working with the department, so they do Google Classroom and everything, so they're just planning to do instruction when we're out of school.
So it's not a training?
It's not a training.
It's not a professional development?
No, it's time. It's time for teachers to work for, to do that and get that done. Because if not, then there's no time to do it, so we gotta make sure they give them time.
The fact of the matter is that many of their children are going to be out of school, whether we are or not.
And we're also, can't make the assumption they'll all be healthy either, so.
Right.
Right, to make sure we do that.
I think that one of the things to point out is the preparation that the district has done in the past with things like Google Classroom and digital instruction and digital content and the management of that, which I cannot stress enough, is extremely difficult. It's not something you can just flip on in the school districts like they're trying to do across the country right now. And I'm confident that we're pretty prepared, that even though we haven't had to do it in the past, they have, they've been skilled and over and over again with the digital learning days and the ongoing professional development, so.
Yeah, it's not gonna be perfect, it's gonna be, you know, there'll be some bumps in the road when we do this. But, you know, Christine and Mary have worked together on this, and I know that Christine developed a website that's gonna be a central repository for teachers to get information, to get ideas, lessons, et cetera. So she's worked on that, and that's almost ready to launch as well. So we wanted to prepare for the worst on this, and it looks like that's what's coming down the path there, so.
I do want to mention one thing, not because I enjoy keeping us here any later, but I want to say that I know what a three-dimensional kind of decision this has to be and how we have to think about different kids. This is not, this is not something that affects kids who are within the general ed spectrum, but it multiply affects kids who are within the special ed.
No doubt.
World. And the idea, I think I've had a couple of parents reach out to me, that that without services for two weeks, what's that really gonna look like? You know, without the structure and the routine. And I think that we just need to acknowledge that there are many populations like that, things that people don't know about, that this is not like, this is a big decision, and I know that we've had to really take it, that it's, and that the state is having to make these decisions as well. And that they're kind of considering all of these populations, but.
Yeah, one of the things that.
Then again, if there's anything we can do to mitigate also within the kind of specialized learning that kids would need, and I know you're probably entirely talking about that.
Mary's been on that, and she's done a really good job with working with her staff to have them plan for that, and she'll do that again tomorrow. I think one of the things that we had just. I think one of the things that we had just talked about prior to coming to this meeting is that she's worked with the guidance staff to, to set up some sort of schedule where kids can check in on a regular basis if we need to do that. And there's going to be set times for certain kids to check in via Skype or FaceTime or however we do that. So we already have those plans in place for, for those kids as well.
So maybe at the younger set, they can simply check in and see the familiar face that they know.
Right.
So we're setting up teams for the elementary, especially at the kindergarten, first grade, you know, level, it's hard for them to think about, you know, calling into a teacher or skipping in or anything. So what we talked about, we met with all the clinical staff within the district. And so what we discussed was trying to send home some plans and some suggestions for families for working with their children as well, some means that might be successful, conversation starters, ways to kind of facilitate some of the therapeutic play sessions that may occur at the school that could be mirrored at home and to have write-ups and description and understanding of what kind of the purpose and the intention is and to make sure that families know they can reach out and kind of access the clinical support as well, but to make sure that they feel comfortable continuing some of these supports because, you know, a kindergartner isn't going to be able to access, but they also may be somebody that's tragically infected by it. So we're trying to kind of think outside the box of ways that we could support that through literacy, through reading, through games, through resources and conversations. So that's what the clinical staff tomorrow will be spending all of, any staff member that works in the mental health kind of realm within the district met today. We all discussed kind of K, pre-K through 12, what we could do, how we could support this, and that's going to be what they do tomorrow during that half day. So we are really trying to think that especially about, you know, that population of students that may be impacted in a different way from this.
And we've also thought about our children who are, who use services, who need to precover their, also they're going to free and reduce lunch. There's, there's communication between the two agencies and between us and the agencies, what that might look like for their families that.
I mean, these are uncharted waters, you know?
Yeah.
And, and the layers and layers. And you think even some of the employees who live paycheck to paycheck and what impact this is on them, the students. And even today in the Board of Health meeting, you know, Jeff said, we have a moral obligation to serve all our students, you know? And then that just causes you to pause, you know, how, you know, how this decision will affect so many layers within our community. So, you know, we don't want to get caught up in the hype, but then we have to be very thoughtful. So I commend you on the composure and you're reaching out to all the various groups and listening because these cannot be easy times.
They're interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I almost asked again, because I think here's where communication between us and the community is important and keeping it as simple as possible. If that happens, the doors may close, the learning continues and the services continue is the high level what we're trying.
Sure.
That, that, that would be what we're, we're saying right off the bat.
Absolutely.
You know, people are thinking all kinds of things, so just, just making sure less sometimes is better, which is, this is what we're doing.
Right.
As we peel the onion on that plan.
Right.
For sure.
We'll share the next layer.
Right.
Because I, I think even if that does happen, just that message from the beginning, the learning continues. Both the parents and the children take a slightly different perspective.
My son's perspective was less rosy than that.
Wild, wild west for a week and now we're trying to bring you back in.
Right, right, exactly. That's a good point.
And then the seniors, I think of you guys. I know it's rough, we, capping me de latte, all the kids were.
At least we got.
A buzz. I know, so hopefully all will be, all will be well, yes.
May you live in interesting times.
Alrighty, anything else on Corona?
I'll just keep, we'll keep you on the loop.
Alright, thank you. Alright, old business, Dale Street Project.
And that's what we have on our agenda all the time. I just wanted to include in your packet, we got the information from, I wrote a blank, Stephen David, David Stephen, I'm sorry, I always do that. David Stephen regarding all the, the input and the information from our visioning sessions. So all that is there. I think you did a great job compiling all that information. A lot of that we use while we're putting together some of the ed plan sections, but it's, we put it on the website, thank you, put it on the website.
Thank you for all your work.
It's a great resource people look at, you know, get a really good sense of how much input was taken in and, you know, those folks did a great job. And to think that members of the ed visioning were there for four sessions, you know, multiple hours, excuse me, three sessions, multiple hours. So that was really a commitment on their part, so we appreciate the work that they did on that.
Is that up on the website?
It's on the website.
Okay, great.
Yeah, it's up there.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's all there.
FY21 budget?
So as I put in the materials, we received an email from a warrant committee representative asking us to reduce our budget by $1 million. So I don't think I've ever had that in an email to me before, but that was interesting. So. I, I don't know what, I haven't heard what the, the actual budget gap is right now in the town. The last time I did hear it was 1.2 million for FY21. So we were asked to reduce our budget by 1 million. So I guess that leaves 200,000 for the town, I don't know. Really been working on ed plan and coronavirus for the last four, three or four days, so I haven't really had that conversation. But that's something that I think I met with, monthly meeting with the union yesterday and talked to them about that request. So we don't get to a million dollars by cutting paper clips. So that's something that we need to look at more closely. I know we're having our meeting with the warrant committee on, is it Monday night that we're doing that? So I, maybe we get some more clarity. I, I did have a brief conversation with the Chair of the Warrant Committee where the request was to make sure that we had some thoughtful cuts, which he had no doubt there would be. But that's where we are, folks, I mean, a million dollars. I, I would say that, you know, from my perspective, doing this for 14 years, that when you have a, an override or 6%, I mean, overriding a 6% budget and, and, you know, you should be in good shape for a while. So the fact that we came in on that MOU number, not the actual number that is in the policy, but the MOU number of 4%, which was the conversation that we had.
It was the number that we were given at the beginning of this process.
Yeah, I just thought that's where, so to, to, to go from that to now we want you to be at a 1.28 increase.
Oh, that's cutting a million, 1.28?
Yeah, we're 1.28, Michael. That what it came out to be, 1.24. So.
And that's people.
Of course, yeah, absolutely.
That's a lot.
That's a lot of people.
So I think that's something that, you know, I'm very concerned about. I know that the teachers, the union folks that I spoke to, yes, they're very concerned about, and I know you guys are all very concerned about that as well because it, it just, it just seems like a different process this year, so.
So as far as we know, is that request, similar requests made to other groups across the town?
I don't know that, Tim. Yeah, I don't know. My sense is if we're asked for a million, it's 1.2, they're not cutting the percentage that we are, so.
And so what do we, we trying to run through the budget and figure it out?
Yeah, so we, we'll have that meeting with them on, on Monday night and, and go through those numbers. I mean, I think the expectation that the warrant committee has of us is that we would go through and make some reductions and try to be a little creative with things. I know that, that email mentioned things like bus fees and all those kinds of things. I just, I, I need to say it again, I've said it a thousand times since I've been here. You know, we generate over $3 million and we are funding 41 people this year outside of the tax bracket, outside of the tax levy. So, you know, we're doing additional raising of money, 3 point plus million on fees and grants and, and other sources that allow us to operate. And I say it every year at the public hearing, if the budget's 36 million, it costs 39 to run it. So I don't know, I don't know what direction you folks want to go. I'm just, it's a little frustrating to have someone say to cut a million dollars out of a budget that, you know, it, it takes over 3% to open the doors in August.
When did you get that email, today?
No, 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 no.
It was Monday, maybe? Over the weekend?
Was it Monday or the weekend? I forget.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, I don't know.
It's disappointing. I also think that there's a, a really significant argument to be made that if we are, out of town are asking for the schools to take this kind of haircut and people who are employed by us, then we really need to be very sure that the way that we are taking revenue into the town is the most efficient, that it is all entirely on taxpayer backs, that there are ways that the town itself is raising revenue as well. I think we tend to undersell our town and we tend to think that people won't really want to come here so that when we have larger projects, we don't say things like, we need a local host agreement because if we need to have more kids and more teachers, then what you are making money off of, we also need to be compensated for. I don't think that this is a crazy idea. In fact, most other towns do it. And I, and I've been very vocal with Jeff.
I was a part of that committee in my former district, yes.
Right. I've been vocal about this with Jeff and I think I've been vocal about this in the warrant committee, in the times that I've been allowed to speak. And it's not going anywhere right now, but certainly it needs to go somewhere very soon if we can even think about being able to do this much of a cut. I mean, it is, it's people. It's not just marbles that we're counting in one place or another. And I also think that to some extent, the town is trying, they have cut and cut and cut and it is not fair to their employees any longer either. This is not a town against school thing, this is a revenue issue that people want to think the easiest way to do it is to cut spending and that's not the easy way to do it. It's just the most expedient way to do it. But we need to be thinking about this in a much longer term way. That is my opinion.
Oh, dear.
I think of it, like for the meeting on Monday, I mean, what bad things happen if we do? And alternatively, if you're on the warrant committee, what bad things happen if we don't? Like, that's how someone has to look at it. You know, I think we need to be at least prepared to say, these are, you know, I get what you're saying, that means people. What does that mean? That's what I, that's how I look at it. Yeah, yeah, I mean, either, you know, if, if we do, right, you can do anything and this is the bad things that happen because of it.
Right.
They're all, you know, sort of counting every paper clip.
I literally did actually hand somebody a paper clip back the other day. I was like, you're, you, you need, you're going to need this next year.
Well, I, I would say that one of the things that is new this year to Michael and I is, and is part of the new policy, is that the capital committee now considers technology, infrastructure or our hardware as capital. So some of the reductions that we're recommending would be to move some of that out of, out of our operating budget and put that into the capital. So now we're kind of at risk, if the capital doesn't pass, then we lose all that.
Right. And to some extent, I kind of think like that's putting textbooks into their capital. I mean, we use our computers as textbooks. That's where our kids' access to the world comes from. Now, there are advantages and disadvantages, but it's really just robbing Peter to pay Paul. We need better solutions than just that. That might be a short-term solution, but it's not a great one and it's not a great one that becomes optional, becomes a thing you cut. You know, you can't, it's not any way to run a railroad.
So that's where we are. We'll, we'll be looking at it again on, on Monday certainly, but I know that you guys are going to be there as subcommittee members and, yeah, yeah, I think.
And then we'll get a, a recap on the 26th.
Yes.
That's just a bummer.
And school committee members can be there in the audience.
Yep.
You know, obviously don't discuss and we know that.
Yep.
Certainly. Welcome to be there for observation, as is any other member of the public. It's in the Public Safety Building downstairs.
Seven?
It's, it's Monday, seven.
Alrighty, well, thank you. Any informational items?
So I only had one informational item that I put in your, in your materials. So Michael received a really nice email from Jack McCarthy, who's the Executive Director of, of MSBA. I just wanted to share it with the committee, I thought it was a nice, you know, nice thing that he sent. Michael, I was just looking at the website for, for the MSBA Dale Project. I understand that you are the author of this website. I commend you for having such an organized and complete website. It's among the best I've seen from MSBA projects. Keep up the good work, regards, Jack. So I thought that was just a nice acknowledgement of the work that Michael does on that website. It's very clear, very organized and very easy to find, whatever you need to find on it, so just wanted to, to, to give Michael kudos for that, so I appreciate that.
Michael, when did you take the website design class?
That's a good question. No, I just worked with Andrea and I worked with the public to make sure that it's easy to, easy to read and easy to find information. We've looked at other websites and tried to take the best from other websites and ensure that, you know, the community is informed.
And other communities contact us about our website, so it's, it's, it's a good one. That's all I have, ma'am chair.
Beautiful. Campbell, how are you?
Thanks for coming.
Great. That was, been like, interesting.
Yeah.
I think it had to come for this one, so.
Yeah.
I couldn't miss it. Been good. This Tuesday, we had a lunch for the lunch staff, student council, which was great, kind of giving back to them was awesome. Unfortunately, I was out for that, but I heard it was great and it put in a lot of planning. A bunch of students donated during English class, a few dollars here and there, but it, everyone kind of came together, funded that one, so it was good to see that.
That's lovely.
And it's definitely going to be an interesting day in weeks ahead, but it's good that you guys are getting on top of it, preventing future, you know, stuff, so. Hard to talk about, sorry.
Yeah.
Your first pandemic.
Yeah, it's my, I'm a little out of practice.
It's my first pandemic too, it's okay, yeah.
Alright, you know, it's not often that you get to rehearse your pandemic.
Yes, I forgot, it slipped my mind this week, but I'll be better next time.
It's a growth, growth opportunity.
But hearts and thoughts to the seniors, because I know there's a lot. This is a big year and there might be some bumps and.
Here's what it is, there's a lot of other people that are going through worse training this, you know?
For sure, for sure, and that's a beautiful attitude.
It's disruptive and I think that we should all just, as a community, care for each other because this is, this is not what we thought would be happening a month ago, really, if you think about it.
No.
This is not where we thought we were putting our energy, this is not what we thought we were doing. And I think that that, that disrupts our kids a lot and we should be very gentle with them, but it also disrupts their parents and the community members around them. We should just be a little self forgiving about that if we're a little snappy or a little fuzzy over the next couple of weeks.
Well said.
Oh, my turn? Yes. The word around the dinner table the last two nights has been, that we're learning is unprecedented, so. So you can ask Henry and Anna, they will be able to tell you what that is now. No, I want to say that the communication, Jeff, has been excellent. I will tell you that it's, it's not happening to that caliber everywhere, so I will say that.
Thank you.
And I appreciate that. And then, because I've been sharing your emails with some other people who are complaining about a lack of communication as, as an example of what, and thank you for labeling, numbering them as well, because I think that's important, to get that information out there.
Although number 86, 87, I'm not sure.
And regardless of what the coming weeks bring, I know, as I was speaking to Anna May earlier in the week, that we are well-prepared for the adversity of, that's going to be needed to navigate a little bit of distance learning and a little bit of being able to leverage the technology that we've invested in and the training we've invested in, so. And for that, I think our community will be very appreciative of in the coming weeks. And I'm excited to see the stuff coming in because I know us as parents will be working with our students to try to keep them up, up to date. And we'll probably finish off the entire Invisions workbook for you when they come back. That's right, let me read it, exactly. And if you want to tell the commission if they want to cancel MCAS this year, that'd be fine too.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be great, actually.
So, no, but all joking aside, it is, it is unprecedented across the country, as we know, and schools, I think this is the right move. And I think, and it can't be done, like Medfield just can't do it and it'll all be fine, just for us, it has to be the whole Commonwealth and our surrounding states at the same time. be the whole Commonwealth and our surrounding states at the same time.
Agreed.
And I, I guess I'm going to reflect on Campbell's feeling, it's my first pandemic, and so, and having to deal with that, so.
Better than I do.
Now, I want to reiterate, the communication has been not only clear, concise, and timely, but calm, measured, and encouraged, not encouraging, but comforting, really. You know, my, my oldest, who's the most aware, even said, "You know, I really, I don't feel panicked about this, I feel like we're in a good place, and we've got systems in place." Like, and for a 15-year-old to say that and feel that way, I thank you and the staff.
Yeah, we're not even using that high-priced PR firm either, we're doing it ourselves.
You're doing it straight from the horse's mouth there, yeah, so. And then, I mean, on top of it, this 44-page ed plan, I learned a lot, actually, reading through it, about-
Dito.
Yeah, about the day and the life of a Dale student, and I thought it was great, and, and like Jeff said, no surprises. You know, that, that is the way that they-
This is what we do.
That's what, and it just actually kind of reminded me, gosh, it's, it's a lot, it's a lot to be a teacher. You know, there's a lot going, that goes into it, it's not on accident that kids are where they are in the day, or that the school is even physically laid out the way that it is. So I just, it was eye-opening to see how much thought actually goes into that, so I appreciate that, so.
Thank you.
And just everybody stay safe out there. And you're it.
My, my just comment is, we talked again, Anne May, earlier in the week, you know, it is a strange week. Monday there was talk, are we going to be holding a winter carnival?
Right.
And whether it's here in Medfield or just overall, I said, "We need leadership, and we need to overreact for a bit." It's the lesser evil. And, you know, so I, I think we're, we're getting that, and, you know, we have to continue to monitor and lead, because as these new, new grounds we go into, no one else knows what's going on either, right? So those little things like, "Hey, this is what we're doing," will help, will help everybody. But, you know, it, it is an interesting week.
It sure is.
There's a lot of disappointment with things getting canceled, but at the same point, it's, to me, the lesser evil right now.
And it's so universal, that somebody's disappointment is the same as someone else's disappointment, you know, so it's like, "Well, that guy canceled too, so everyone's not doing anything," you know?
It's good that someone had to take the ball off entirely.
Right, right.
It's interesting.
Otherwise, it's so much churn making decisions on each one, and you just have to-
It's, it's interesting, I think the theater programs across the area have really taken a hit. It's not just ours, but almost every community in eastern Massachusetts, it feels like this is their, their musical, their play weekend.
It's a season.
And if it's not this weekend, it starts next Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. So it's that sweet spot for the theater program that's really disappointing, I know for them, and we, we tried today to get that done tonight, but it didn't work.
I was thinking about that for my alma mater, that, you know, kids who are graduating from college right now in theater departments are using that last big musical for their best design work, for their, putting their portfolio together, and then all of a sudden, that show's not happening for you. You're losing that last semester of, of all of your work. On the other hand, what I would suggest is if anybody is doing remote learning and wants to social distance, the woods are amazing right now and full of incredible animals. I saw bullfrog tadpoles the size of a half-dollar at Hinckley, everybody loves those, but we'll start dumping chemicals in there. There are wood frogs out, there are spring keepers coming. This is a, I saw my first skunk cabbage, this is a great time of year to be outside.
Sure is.
You know, so, well, it might be lousy, let's go, let's go out and enjoy the woods. There's a lot of science and a lot of other opportunities out there.
Wear your deep for the ticks, they're already out.
Oh, I know.
Yeah.
Yeah, and wear your deep, and you know, da-da-da, for the other thing that'll get you to, oh my God, nature's trying to kill us.
That's exactly what the school physician said today, just keep your kids outside.
Yeah.
Keep it outside. I just want to mention the Read Across America, that was really fun. I don't, I think some of you guys did that, right? Darn, I'm not going to get to do that. No, maybe next week, maybe?
I don't know. I mean, I did the one, but-
Yeah, you were up there, you're going to be up there pretty soon.
Oh, that's not probably good.
But you know, it was great, I hadn't been in Memorial in such a long time, so first of all, it's just, it's different, and they've got things on the ground, and when we went into the classroom, just before they sat down, they took like a mindful moment, and they did some deep belly breaths, and then they squeezed, you know, it was just, I loved it. There was, you know, there's a lot of positive change and efforts within the SEL, so it was wonderful to see it in action, because I, I've heard about it, so I just think there's a lot of beautiful things happening over there, and they're just so darn cute.
They're adorable. I had to leave my book. They didn't want me to take my book. I was like, "Okay, you can have my book."
And then I thought Cafe Rita Latte this week was really fun, it's great to see the buzz, and who knew that so many kids show up here at 7 o'clock in the morning and hang out, and so that was really fun, and, um, yeah, these are interesting times.
And we will get back to these times.
Indeed.
This is a blip, and-
We'll make it through, no doubt.
We'll make it through. We're, as I often say-
Yes.
We are intelligent and flexible people, and we will work it out.
Yep.
Jeff, and before we get to that, and you would be the, this is the open end, but is there areas that you're saying, "Hey, this is where we could use help," or, yeah, this is unprecedented, but the community also come together, anything?
No, I think one of the things that, that we've been working on, and I know Michael has been taking the lead on it, is we're getting, we're getting concerned, like every other district, concern of, of cleaning supplies may run out at some point. You know, I think that's one of the things that, our usual vendor is completely out, and we've gone through a couple other vendors to get additional wipes and those kinds of things, but I know that there was a, there was a concern, just to kind of clarify some stuff that's out there, there was a concern about not having soap in the boys' room at one point, so we did get to the bottom of that. The child thought it was an automatic one, so he kept putting his hand underneath it and didn't press to get it out. So that, those kinds of things can happen, so just a good reminder that we don't have those fancy automatic ones at the restaurants.
So we can't take those out of the budget.
Yeah, right, so we don't have those. So just, you know, I think we're, we just want to make sure that we have enough supply for what we need to do. And we tried to, we, the bus, the liaison for the bus company went to Ocean State Job Lot and bought every single Lysol wipe they had, case, the cases of them, so that the buses always had a fresh supply this week to wipe down the seats and all that. So we're trying to get ahead of that, but I think at some point, if this continues, we may be in, in trouble with that. But one of the things that we asked the, the commissioner and the governor last Friday, when we had our first conference call, was to try to get additional supplies and free up supplies just for schools, and designate them earmarked just for schools, no other places can get them, so I know they're working on that.
Because there are stockpiles of them somewhere through FEMA, through MEMA, through, yeah, it's just about whether we can get access to them.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I mean, and I think that, you know, the community's been super patient, they've been great, gotten some really nice emails from people, which is nice. So I think that's, as long as people can keep their patience and know that we're trying to do the best we can, that's all I can ask.
Beautiful. Alright, next meeting, March 26th, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Alrighty, thank you, guys.
Thank you.